And welcome all of you to tonight's meeting of Lebanon City Council. We'll open with a roll call, the invocation by Reverend Don Anderson and Pledge of Allegiance.
Carney, here, Suter.
Yes.
Crabtree.
Here.
Mitchell.
Here.
Mather.
Here.
Almore.
Here.
Jordan.
Here.
Wheeler.
Here.
Mayor Anderson.
Here.
Let's bow our heads for prayer. Most kindly gracious heavenly Father, as we come to you this evening, we are so thankful for a beautiful day that you've given to our community and Lord, all the many blessings of this life that you bestowed upon us. And Father, tonight, as we come here together to attend to the business of our community, we pray for our leaders who stand before us tonight, to give them wisdom, courage, and strength and discernment to be able to make the decisions that are best for our community in that you would lead them in. And Father, I thank you tonight for all those who serve and protect our community, for the police, the fire, the EMS workers, and Lord, I pray that you would give them protection and just continue to bless them with safety, we pray. We ask your blessings upon tonight's council meeting, that you would be glorified in all things that are done, and we thank you again for those who serve us so faithfully, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. Our Pledge of Allegiance to the Father of the United States of America and to the Republic for which he stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next, we'll have public comments, and I'll start on the left and front and just work back. Is there anybody over here that would like to address council? I'll start in the back on the right and work this way. Anybody on this side who want to address council? Then we'll move to discussions and presentations and start with the audit for fiscal 14.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hello. Thanks for putting me on the agenda at the top.
Welcome back.
Thank you. Okay, I'm, we're just gonna go over the highlights, so if you want to start on page 15, this is the combined balance sheet, the assets and liabilities, and on this page, I just wanted to point out that the center section, we've got a new category for capital assets, we're trying to start getting the assets on the books, so this has got two years of assets, so we're making progress. Also on this page, total debt, long-term debt had been reduced by almost $2 million, so did some good by paying off debt. If you want to go to page 17, this is your general street capital improvement fund, your general fund actually increased cash, your capital improvements had increased cash. None of these were really big increases, but at least, you know, it's better than going down, so overall, the, all these type of funds had increased $674,000 in cash. We'll go to page 19, this is a summary of your revenues and expenses for the same funds, and you had just a small increase in sales tax revenues, they had gone up 2 percent. Most of the other categories were very similar, you did have a 6 percent increase in fine and court costs.
A 6 percent increase in?
Fines and court costs.
Thank you.
As far as expenses go, administration went up 4 percent, public safety 3 percent, recreation went up 21 percent, you had a decrease in transportation by 14 percent. So if you look at three lines from the bottom, the general fund had a profit of almost $171,000. Capital improvements had a loss of a little over $750,000, but a lot of that was your refinancing and paying off debt. Street had a profit of $272,000, and then all your other smaller various funds had a profit of $93,000. Now, if you want to move to page 21, this is, these are the funds that had the biggest change, page 21, this is your utilities, electric, water, sewer, fiber optics. Electric fund took a pretty good hit and had their cash and investments decrease a little over $910,000 for the year. The water fund had decreased $320,000, and you had an increase of $136,000 on sewer. So if you want to go to page 22, these are the revenues and expenses. Your charges for the electric, for what you collected, they stayed about the same as what they had in the previous year. Your water revenues actually, and sewer both decreased 4 percent, which is common for what I'd seen this past year because of the mild rainfall, and everybody's experienced the same decrease for water and sewer, well sewer, since it's billed based on water usage. Electric, we'll look at those expenses, you actually had a decrease in personnel costs by 1 percent, but you had a 7 percent increase in operation and maintenance. So if you look at three lines from the bottom, that's the net profit or loss, you had a loss Water, you had a profit of $664,000 on the expenses, that, your personnel costs for water actually went down 6 percent, but your operating costs remained about the same. Sewer personnel costs decreased 3 percent, so you had a decrease in all these categories for the utility companies for personnel costs. And in sewer, you had a 12 percent decrease in operations and maintenance. So sewer had a profit of $877,000. But your electric fund, having, taking such a huge hit, you know, when you're looking at close to a million dollars, you're not gonna be able to sustain that for too many years without depleting all your reserves. And that's all I have, do you have any questions?
Anybody? Thanks.
Thank you.
Now we have presentations for the fire department.
I'm not sure I can follow that very well, but I'll certainly try. If you'll excuse me, those of you who know me know I'm out of my element speaking in public, especially addressing the council, I don't do that very well. At least, that's what you guys told me before in time to time. Tonight, we're here, I wanna start off with some brief information. According to the American Heart Association, each year in the United States, there are nearly 400,000 sudden cardiac arrests that occur outside of the hospital. That means there are nearly 1,000 people, or just over 1,000 people each day, that are gonna suffer a sudden cardiac arrest at home, or at work, or anywhere else they may be. Less than 10 percent of those will survive. Those aren't very good numbers. Early CPR and utilization of an automatic external defibrillator, or an AED that you may have heard of, are vital to surviving sudden cardiac arrest. Those two simple steps, providing immediate CPR and having an AED immediately available, can double or triple the victim's chance of survival. There's some amazing things that have happened in Lebanon over the last few months, and to share this information with you, I have three presentations I'd like to make tonight, but before I continue, there are two people I want to introduce, Bob Patterson, who's Executive Director of Mercy Emergency Medical Services, and Bruce Nogal, who is the Regional Director for Emergency Medical Services. These gentlemen are part of the system that we use here in Lebanon, in the Cleet County, to respond to medical emergencies, and they're gonna help me hand out some plaques tonight to some extraordinary people, both in our community and employees of both our agencies, the Lebanon Fire Department and Mercy EMS. If you gentlemen, go ahead. Mr. Danny Ogil could come forward, I believe he's in the crowd tonight. We'll stand by those gentlemen. Mr. Ogil survived a cardiac arrest, and has actually returned back to work. On June 27th, Mr. Ogil suffered a sudden cardiac arrest while at work at Tented Visions. Family members and employees, along with fire department personnel and Mercy Emergency Medical Services personnel, were successful in reviving Mr. Ogil. The early CPR performed by family members and employees, as well as the continued care provided by fire and EMS personnel, was instrumental in saving Mr. Ogil's life. On behalf of the City of Lebanon, the Lebanon Fire Department, and Mercy Emergency Medical Services, we'd like to recognize Daniel Ogil, Danny's son, I believe, come on up, sir, Jared Angst, and Chris Blackburn. All three of these gentlemen performed CPR on Mr. Ogil prior to fire and EMS arrival, and the steps they took really made a difference in his survivability. We'd like to present each of these gentlemen with the Citizen Life Saving Award for the effort, their efforts on June 27th of this year. In addition, we'd like to recognize the fire and EMS personnel that responded to that call. Unfortunately, Captain Jason Durden is not able to be here this evening, but firefighter paramedic Terry Salzman, the Lebanon Fire Department is. Brick Diamond to those who knows, who know him best. Got one on you, didn't I? Along with Emergency Medical Services Personnel Sue Gregory, who is not here this evening, and EMT Kate Jankel, he's gonna be happy that I got his name right, who were ultimately able to revive Mr. Ogil at the scene. We recommend each of them for their efforts, and we present this life-saving award from City of Lebanon Fire Department and Mercy Emergency Services to each of them. You guys wanna butt up a little bit closer real quick? Julie would like to get a picture and stuff. You gentlemen can be seated, please. Unless anybody else needs a photo op. We're not done yet. I'd like to ask Ms. Bambi Cummings to come forward. On July 2nd, Ms. Bambi Cummings suffered a sudden cardiac arrest while at a spin class at Anytime Fitness. Witnessing the event unfold, two fellow class members immediately started CPR and obtained an AED provided by Anytime Fitness. Using the AED, the two classmates were successful in reviving Ms. Cummings. Upon their arrival, fire and EMS personnel continued to stabilize Bambi and provide supportive care necessary. On behalf of the City of Lebanon, the Lebanon Fire Department, and Mercy Emergency Medical Services, I'd like to recognize Tracy Britt. And Rhonda Buttram. For their efforts in revitalizing Ms. Cummings, who was starting to breathe on her own and had a pulse by the time fire and EMS arrived, and our crews just happened to be close, we were literally there in two minutes, so the utilization of that AED and immediate CPR certainly made a life-saving difference for Ms. Cummings. In recognition of their efforts, we'd also like to recognize paramedic John Chaffin, paramedic Nick LaPorto, and paramedic intern Troy Killingsworth, who wasn't able to be with us this evening. Unfortunately, Lieutenant Tim Ray and firefighter, oh, they got back in time. Oh, you didn't go? So from the Lebanon Fire Department, Lieutenant Tim Ray and firefighter Cody Deckard were also there. This crew of people working together stabilized Ms. Cummings further and transported her to area hospitals. We'd like to represent, present them with this life-saving award as well, for their efforts in Ms. Cummings. Okay. One more to go. There's one more group we'd like to recognize. On May 7th of this year, fire and EMS personnel responded to a cardiac arrest patient here in Lebanon. That patient survived and has returned to their normal life, however, they weren't able to be here with us this evening, and without them being here, we're not really wanting to share their name without their permission. But we would like to recognize the people who survived, who responded to that call. Firefighter Joseph Seaman, I believe he's here. And firefighter Chris Westcoat, both with the City of Lebanon. Chris wasn't able to be here, he's at his other job tonight. Mercy EMS personnel, again, paramedic John Chaffin, seems to be a common denominator in a couple of these events. EMT Dennis Strong, and paramedic intern, at least at the time, Clint Barber, I believe they're all here. Again, that patient did survive their cardiac arrest event and returned to their normal life, but they were unable to be here with us this evening, but this crew certainly made a difference in that individual's life as well. Gentlemen, ladies, if you have a seat. Patty's gotta have like 14 photos or something. So, one last thing, don't click on it yet, it'll take off. So with the success of these cases, and again, like I said, less than 10 percent of the people who suffer sudden cardiac arrest will survive. Working with Castlewood Studios and our partners Mercy EMS and the Fire Department, we've created two videos that we're gonna start utilizing for public service announcements. CPR classes are across the area, and we're also gonna have them up on social medias. I'd like to show you one of the two videos that we've made. I apologize for the acting, I hope you can forgive me, but I think you'll get the point. Thank you very much.
On July 2nd of this year, crews from the Lebanon Fire Department and Mercy Emergency Medical Services responded to a cardiac arrest event at a local fitness place, Anytime Fitness here in Lebanon.
I was in the middle of a spin class, and I noticed one of my riders came off the bike, and I have him there in front of me, so I noticed that she kinda went down like that. And my partner next to me, Bambi, she fell off her bike and was collapsed, so then when she fell to the floor, we immediately went to her aid, Rhonda and I did, and we checked to see if she had a pulse, and then we checked to see what the situation was as to why she fell.
And so Tracy was the one who said, "Let's go get an AED."
The AED itself was so easy to use, all you had to do was unzip it, place it, it shows you where the pads go, right underneath the breasts, right on the bottom of the stomach area, you just plug it right in, you push the button, whether it's adult or a child, and it analyzes the patient right there on the spot, and you push the button, and you can, and it tells you how to do CPR.
When we first arrived at the fitness center, we saw some citizens doing CPR, and they'd already put the AED on the patient, and that's really our first step whenever we get to end of those situations, that we wanna initiate that kinda care, so it was really good to see that those citizens had taken that initiative to do that, and it really helped us as we started to do what we did.
I mean, that's really what saved her, was the early access to CPR and an AED before fire department could even get on the scene, 'cause the minutes is life for cardiac tissue, and without that AED or people there that knew how to do CPR, there's a very good chance that she might not have made it.
I would not be here at all if it wasn't for Tracy and Rhonda acting as efficiently and as correctly as they did. Part of the reason is their action and the action of the AED, and the fact that it was here, and it was simple enough that even when you're upset and, you know, doing everything, that it was simple enough to say, "Oh, this is how I use it."
If we did not have an AED to use, I'm not sure if we could have saved her life.
If they hadn't had one here, we would've lost her that night.
AEDs are valuable resource in increasing the survivability of someone who's suffered a sudden cardiac arrest, and so places like factories, schools, churches, sports arenas, things of that nature, where there's always a large crowd of people gathering for social events or even work, it's vital to have an AED available in those locations.
And nowadays, you know, so many people stand around, and they may not know what to do if someone's cold freezing, and let me tell you, you have four to six minutes before brain damage is caused. After 10 minutes, it's irreversible.
But until you actually need it, you don't realize how important it is, and that incident proved to us how important it is. So we're glad we have it, we're glad the franchise is so supportive of it, and we hope that other businesses realize that as well.
First CPR, and that first shot can save you as much as getting EMS and fire department on scene, so that's why it just needs to be everywhere, it need to be just in every business.
Again, I think the actions taken by our citizens and our fire and EMS personnel are commendable, and I thank each and every one of them for their actions on those days.
Thanks, Sam. Every year, we have a program in Lebanon called Hometown Heroes, and tonight, we've learned that we just scratched the surface. There are a lot of hometown heroes that are willing to go above and beyond on behalf of their fellow citizens, and I'd like you all to join me in saying thank you one more time. The next item on our, tonight's agenda is approval of warrants. And I'd like to have motion.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any specific warrant you wanna talk about? Could I have a roll call?
Carney.
Yes.
Suter.
Yes.
Crabtree.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Mather.
Yes.
Almore.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Wheeler.
Yes.
I will move your ordinances, and there being no second ratings, we move to first and second ratings, and the first of these is Council Bill 4029, which is an agreement for Lebanon regional economic development, and I'd like to have a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
Have we got a replacement coming on for the Fedman?
I'm sorry?
Have we got a replacement coming from our yet? How we do with that?
I can answer just as a board member that we're gonna be advertising in the next couple of weeks and kinda going from there, so that's the plan.
It's not gonna be easy, it'll take a while.
Exactly.
Because we're not gonna get somebody with the knowledge of market.
Would this be an opportune time to take a second look at what we're doing with Ready? It's been around for how many years?
10.
10? About 10 years? Doesn't it need to be fine-tuned a little bit? Does it need to be looked at in an objective way? Those are curious questions, of course.
I can't conceive of our community without the organization.
No.
We have a number of people here that can answer your questions, so I would encourage you to ask them.
I would not propose doing away with Ready unless there was an alternative. That's the reason I think that it's, it would hurt to take a look at it.
Well, there's certainly alternatives, there's alternatives to everything. Wouldn't you agree? There's always an alternative. I mean, the city could do their own economic development, you can hire corporations, people to do your economic development. There's, I mean, there's always options. I would like to see an option for something that worked. I don't believe Ready is working the way it's intended to work.
Because?
Pardon?
Because?
Because. I see no new business. I hear we have helped with some expansions. I've lived here basically all my life, it's not about my mind, that those people, or those businesses that had expanded, would've expanded with or without Ready. Can I say Ready maybe helped them in some way? Sure, I think they probably did. But what do we really have to show for one and a half million dollars that's been spent on the total budget in the last 10 years? That's an approximate, judging from the last few years' budgets. What do we have to show for that? We could've done a lot with one and a half million dollars. We could build another building. There's a lot of things we could do with it. I just don't see where there's really been any new development as far as business. We've had a couple of businesses that was brought in, I understand, by Ready, but they're not here any longer, it didn't work out. I think we can do better. And we've got, right now, there's self, 20, what, 20-some self-appointed board members trying to direct the future of our city, and we're not, we're not gaining anything that I can see. I read the new agreement, and I see nothing in this new agreement that stands out to me. Anything that's in that agreement is anything that should've been in it years ago, and they should've been doing years ago, if they weren't, they should've been. So, you know, I don't really see anything new, and I don't know if disagreement with a few more things spelled out in it means a whole lot. It kinda reminds me of the meeting we had about this time last year. And I think everyone that was here will remember, we had a good discussion with Ready and the council members, and we kinda agreed that there was a lack of communication. Everybody agreed to that, that there was a lack of communication, and it was agreed that there would be better communication than this last year. There hasn't been. It was also, I thought we came to a census that Ready would make some changes, if they could, reorganize a few things, see if they couldn't improve their operations, be more progressive toward the community and toward new business. Shortly after that, I recall going to a meeting, a dinner, which we were invited to, I don't know, I don't suppose all council members went, but we hadn't been in the meeting too long until we were told point-blank there would be no reorganization, and there would be no changes. there would be no reorganization and there would be no changes. Everything was working perfect. I didn't know how to take it. An insult or, I don't know. But after we funded Ready, they decided they wasn't changing anything. They wasn't going to try to do anything any different than they had done in the past. I look at the budget. Do you realize how much money is in marketing? Which is the whole purpose of this. In my opinion, it's the whole purpose of it. Budgeting, all the money, about 4% goes to marketing for the city of Lebanon. 4%, folks. Surely, we can do better than that. It's small. We've got a situation that's created turmoil in the community. Turmoil between Ready, the city, the county, the chamber, friendships. I can't see it going anywhere. So I don't know why we would be willing to continue to fund. And they've already lost funding from the county. I don't know what the budget will be, but you, there's barely enough to cover salaries. Going to last year's budgets, barely enough to cover salary. And not really even 4% in there for marketing that I can see. So I don't know why we would want to continue on when there, as Bill has said, there are other options. You know, before Ready, some of the largest corporations we have in Lebanon today was brought here by a mayor and the city council. We didn't, back in those days, they didn't depend on any outside organization to bring business in. You were a part of it. I know we hear things have changed, but has it really changed that much that the city can't do something on their own? And while we're on this subject, I spoke with Chris, just briefly spoke with him recently. If you haven't driven out by our industrial park, you might ought to take a look. It looks like, if you really drive up into it deep, it looks like a dump site, which is what it is. I realize we have to have a place for waste. But it's not very impressive. You can't read the signs. The weeds, grass, and sprouts are growing up. There's brush piles out there. It's got trees growing out of them. It's really not very attractive. I just wanted to throw that in there while we're on the subject of economic development. But at this point, I can't see, for my part, funding it any further.
Without the participation of the county, I just cannot see how Ready will have enough money to operate efficiently. Now, they can hire a director, they can hire a secretary, but it takes more than that to have economic development. I know, I was involved in it. I would like to see a project, a program, or whatever that would bring the county back into economic development. It's very important for the county to be involved. If you're out here looking for a job, it makes no difference to who hires you, whether you're from the city or from the county. And I would really like to see the county get back involved.
So would Will.
Well, I have a few comments then along that line. I don't want to go over everything that Mark brought up last week as to what he saw happen while he was here. But I would like to mention some things that happened before Mark came to the helm, which was also due through Ready. One would be Marine Electrical Products, when they lost their molding plant to fire. Our local organization was working with the city to offer a tax segment with the Enhanced Enterprise Zone. And they kept those 30 jobs in Lebanon, which was a good thing. The establishment of the Enhanced Enterprise Zone that was able to take over some of the products and help include Marine Electric Products and Metal Tech Products when... Then, speaking of Metal Tech Products, and I am kind of reading from the list. The owner of Metal Tech was being heavily courted by Fulton. And the director at that time, Ben Jones, was able to use the newly enacted Enhanced Enterprise Zone to keep 30,000-square-foot building going in town and 25 jobs in Le Cleve County. The DTMP, we've already talked about that. But he was able to get council to invest $4 million to reconstruct, reconstruct a building that had been destroyed by windstorm and keep the income coming and the commitment to 75 new jobs at that time. He also worked through the Emerson Electric Rental Agreement through the old Lee Building at that time. He puts the value of that at about $1 million, the value of the lease. instrumental in putting together the Dream Initiative downtown. Helped to get the tractor supply by working with Merle Jones. And also with Dalco, he was able to, or he's throwing this in because it happened before him, but we know that Dalco at that time employed 50 to 60 folks. So I'll have to disagree a little bit and say that I think Ready has done a lot for our community. And if we're going to keep jobs, we need people that are skilled and trained because none of us are skilled and trained to do that. I don't have that capability. And I don't think any of the other of us up here have the ability to do that. And we're certainly going to trust our business leaders in our community to put their faith in a man that they'll bring forward to help with the new person and help continue with this. I just can't imagine how Lebanon and Le Cleve County can stay competitive and progressive with our economic development without some kind of an organization like that. And, you know, you get some new blood in there. He may have, you know, or he or she may have different ideas. And we've got to have a face of our economic development. And that has to be Ready and somebody to represent us in Jefferson City and different places around. It just...
How much longer should we continue on, would you think?
I can't ever imagine not having it. I think it has to be part of our intricate, part of our system and our government.
Well, I agree with economic development. I agree with you. But I can't see what we're really gaining that much.
You think we can do better? I think we need to trust our business leaders and who they put their faith in in hiring to...
Could we do better?
I mean, I know I wouldn't have...
Could we do better with the county's participation?
Of course.
Yes, I don't...
We didn't motivate the candidate to move. That was personality.
Everything's personality, isn't it?
I think that could be reversed.
I'm sorry?
I think that could be reversed.
Mr. Mayor, I see this as an opportunity to improve this situation all the way around. I personally have supported Ready and their predecessors financially since the time they were organized. I put my money where my mouth is. I wrote those checks. Now, is this organization perfect today? No. Have they got problems throughout the county? They've got serious problems. And the last election ought to be a message to everyone in this room that something needs to be addressed by that organization. I would like to see a plan from them on how they're going to improve their standing in the community. I would like to see a budget from them showing how they're going to spend our money and the other monies that they have available to them and how they're going to earmark that. And I would like to see a commitment from them showing where this organization is going to be and how they're going to react with us and with the county government and with the other industries. Now, can something like that be worked out and presented? I don't think there's a thing wrong with any of the proposals that they expect us to provide funding and we expect to receive services for that funding.
Which we have no control over, really.
Well...
You know, I have a pretty good problem with the way this stuff's reported to us. I know that Ready was involved in one of the sale of the city property here recently. And apparently, they'd been negotiating on it for six months before we knew anything about it. The council was in the dark for six months on this. It's a piece of property they sold, the city ended up selling. And I voted for it for $1 million. We spent $1,400,000 building this property. We also give some more land with the property. Now, if I build a house out here and I rent it out and after 10 years, I've got all that money back in about what I paid for the house, should I just turn it over to somebody and just give it to them? I think basically that's what we did with the Dalco building.
But we continue receiving from Dalco.
But let's stick to this debate, Mayor.
Yeah. I'm glad you did mention about the election.
I think we need, well, you're treading on really thin ice right there. Just because that might be your perspective of something. When there's an election, be careful. You know, I'm just saying that's...
I agree, I agree.
That, you're, yeah.
Well, all I was going to say was...
That's what the cold candidates were about, even when...
The only thing I was going to say was...
I'm making a motion to approve.
All I was going to say was, I guess we'll know come April if they still agree with us.
I think that that's the ultimate solution. People have that option every time we have an election.
That's correct.
Call for a vote?
You made a motion?
Well, we already had a motion.
Did you get a second?
Yes.
I call for the vote.
Okay. Call for the vote.
Suter?
No.
Crabtree?
No.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Mather?
Yes.
Elmore?
No.
Jordan?
Yes.
Wheeler?
No.
Herney?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Move on to the second.
Second, second.
Crabtree?
No.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Mather?
Yes.
Elmore?
No.
Jordan?
Yes.
Wheeler?
No.
Herney?
Yes.
Suter?
No.
Mayor?
Yes.
Council Bill 4029 has just become ordinance 5282. Council Bill 4030 deals with the collection of hazardous waste recycling. Would you like to tell us what we're doing, Richard?
This is just an agreement with the vendor to provide pickup services for all the household hazardous waste. We had two bidders. Melissa took the quantities of all the components that we received in the previous year and plugged the unit cost into it and basically awarded trade B based upon those numbers. It's a little confusing because the unit costs, some of them look higher than the one that was the second bidder. This will be, this will provide the pickup and then also a event day in Camden, Osage Beach area for one day. So this, the vendor is the same vendor that we've used the past two years. So we have a relationship with them. So that's always a good thing.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any questions?
Just to comment, this is one of the things that we get out of our involvement with Lake Osage County government and our fees and the funds that we, the membership we pay down there each year. This is part of the benefits we get from that. And this alone pays it back, this alone more than pays back what we pay in.
It's a big benefit.
Yes, absolutely.
Could I have a roll call, please?
I'm sorry, did I have, get a motion?
Yes.
The second?
The second.
I made the motion.
Lena, are you asleep? I think I had somebody in my ear, maybe. So Ms. Herney, you have...
Who's sick? Don't listen to him.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Mather?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Herney?
Yes.
Suter?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
Move on to the second?
Second to second.
Mather? Yes. Elmore?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Herney?
Yes.
Suter?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Council Bill 4030 has just become ordinance 5283. Council Bill 4031 deals with purchase of bulk diesel and other petroleum products.
This is just our annual fuel bid. We do have a new supplier. And so I thought we got a fairly competitive price, so...
I noticed he was from, it's from Indiana. I mean, does that include the transportation to get the fuel here? Or how does that work?
Yeah. I think that's where their corporate, that's where their bidding office is. But yeah, they'll, I mean, they'll locally supply us, so...
Motion to approve.
Second.
Elmore?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Herney?
Yes.
Suter?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Mather?
Yes.
Move on to the second.
Second, second.
Jordan?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Herney?
Yes.
Suter?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Mather?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Council Bill 4031 has just become ordinance 5284. Council Bill 4032 deals with purchase of trench shielding.
Yeah, this is just safety equipment we've rented based upon projects in the past. And as opposed to renting, we're just going to try to buy it and save some money over the longevity of the equipment. We'll split it up roughly 75% sewer and then 25% water. Obviously, sewer goes deeper most of the time, so...
Motion to approve.
Second. What do you spend a year in rentals? It's based upon the, based upon the year. Last year, we spent a tremendous amount of money, you know, around $12,000, I would guess.
Did we get a second?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Herney?
Yes.
Suter?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Mather?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Move on to the second.
Second, sir.
Herney?
Yes.
Suter?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Mather?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Council Bill 4032 is now ordinance 5285. Council Bill 4033 deals with the pumps for the North Fire Sewer Project.
Motion to approve.
Second. When I presented this project earlier in the year, I said that we would kind of weigh in on the cost of controls and see kind of what the participation might be properly on the out there. But fuck around and agree with the participation out there. Also, I worked with... Someone's going to like to do this, right? Yeah, well, you never know. The wastewater personnel, we had a pump on the shelf that a vendor had sent to us. And I heard that they were able to buy that at a previous kind of price. So we're all matched that up. The budget is $2,000 for this type of new project.
Very good. Motion to approve.
I have those, I just needed to do the roll call.
Suter?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Mather?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Herney?
Yes.
Move on to the second. For the second, whichever.
Crabtree?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Mather?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Yes.
Mather?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Herny?
Yes.
Suter?
Yes.
Council Bill 4033 is ordinance 5286. Council Bill 4034 deals with Missouri Lift Station Control Panel Replacements with Missouri Machining and Engineering.
Yeah, this is just replacing the control boxes and the electronics, the components within that box on two lift stations that are in excess, 20 years old. Both of these have taken on some likely strikes, will replace components over the years, and usually they'll replace them out, but sure will allow them to actually withstand the load.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Yes.
Mather?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Herny?
Yes.
Suter?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
Move on to the second. Mather?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Herny?
Yes.
Suter?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Mather?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Herny?
Yes.
Suter?
Yes.
Council Bill 4034 is ordinance 5285. Council Bill 4033 deals with the pumps for the North Side Sewer Project.
Motion to approve. Second.
Whenever I presented this project earlier in the year, I said that we would kind of weigh all the costs and controls and see kind of what the participation might be. We probably aren't out there, but fuck around and figure out participation out there. Also, I worked with, someone was with us, yeah, well, you never know. The wastewater personnel had a pump on the shelf that a vendor had sent to us, and they were able to buy that at a pretty discounted price, so we're going to match that up. The budget is $2,000 for this type of projects, and we'll come up with a lot underneath that.
Very good.
I have those, I just needed to do the roll call. Suter?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Mather?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Herny?
Yes.
Suter?
Yes.
Council Bill 4033 is ordinance 5286. Council Bill 4034 deals with Missouri Lift Station Control Panel Replacements with Missouri Machining and Engineering.
Yeah, this is just replacing the control boxes and the electronics, the components within that box on two lift stations that are in excess, 20 years old. Both of these have taken on some likely strikes, will replace components over the years, and usually they'll replace them out, but sure will allow them to actually withstand the load.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Mather?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Herny?
Yes.
Suter?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
Move on to the second. Mather?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Herny?
Yes.
Suter?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
Move on to the second. Mather?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Herny?
Yes.
Suter?
Yes.
Crabtree?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Mather?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Herny?
Yes.
Suter?
Yes.
Council Bill 4034 is ordinance 5287. That concludes first and second ratings, and there being no first ratings, we'll move to all business of which I know of not. Does anybody have anything they want to bring up?
Remove staff comments. Is there anything from the police department?
Nothing, sir.
Anything further, Senator?
Nothing, sir.
Chris, one.
Yeah, I have, well, so, I'll pick up for Richard, so I sent, I sent out an email, and hopefully you saw it, but we were the People's Choice Award for the Tank of the Year on Route 66 tanks, so I'm excited about that. And the way we painted those is we'll put the school district tower up next year, so we'll have a chance to potentially get two tanks in a row as Tank of the Year, so that hopefully be a lot of the gold. So, that's number one. Two, at 5:30 in the morning, Wednesday morning, if you guys would like to join me, I will be swimming at the pool at the YMCA, it's going to open.
What time, what time did you say?
5:30.
I thought that's what you said.
But there was a little...
Are you testing the waters, are you, before any of the rest of this gets...
There was a little delay in the natural class, so they got it installed today, and it's heated right now, but they're telling me that the water's going to be about 75 degrees, so go ahead and bring your suit, your full-body suit, because it's going to be a little bit cold. But it will be open, it will be open. Safe to date at this point, we're working with the YMCA to put a, basically, rededication and an open house on November 8th from 9:00 to 11:00, I believe. And I'd like to have good participation, and it's going to basically be free swimming and all that. They're going to send some formal stuff out, and I kind of put that on your guys' radar.
Chris, what was that time?
It's going to, I think it's between 9:00 and 11:00. That's still, it's, November 8th is the day, and then we'll kind of firm it up from there, so... And last thing, oh, the audit, I just, one thing I wanted to mention about the audit, it's, getting it in October is a goal that I had, and we came in, because if you guys remember, last year was January, and it's slowly been that time, and so this is the first year that we were really able to get the audit done at the time that it was supposed to be, so I'm very proud of all the staff that worked hard and diligent to make sure that you guys had that. As you know, next meeting, we'll put a resolution on to adopt that, so just in action. So, if you guys have any questions or concerns as you read through it, please let me know in advance so that we can address those prior to the meeting, that'd be great. And then, Geish and Mist, it's on YouTube, and I wouldn't recommend it to anybody. That's all I got.
Chris? Council?
Bill?
Chris had mentioned that he needed a closed session at some point in time.
I think we're going to do it next time, is what they told.
Okay, the next council meeting, okay.
My, my, thanks, Council.
Josh, you're up.
Just a couple things. The turn lane, the fifth turn lane from 2nd to 7th Street, want to give attaboys to Mo Doc. This is also as a result of our constant harping and harping and harping through the TAC Committee of Lake Huron Local Government. Richard and I have gotten that in. Thank you. And just wanted to mention, too, that with the new staffing of Ready, the new funding, everything, it's a good opportunity to make any changes or input from us that we want to find, tune, or whatever. At this point, it's a good time to do it. That's it.
I would like to thank all those men and women that were here tonight for all they've done. We never know how important they really are, but being right here tonight and actually seeing those people and knowing exactly what they've done means a lot. And I can only say that if and when I ever need them, I hope that same staff's available.
I think, remind everybody, we have a blood drive coming up Thursday at Milson.
At Milson. Noon to 5:00.
Yeah.
So, we need to...
The mayor and the presiding judge will be bleeding together Thursday.
I wanted to congratulate Bruce and Daryl, neither one of them are here tonight. I came out for the entire dancing on Route 66, Square Dance, but they were having a lot of fun. Daryl graciously volunteered to sign me up for Square Dance lessons, and so, I'm not, but volunteered to sign me up. But I was encouraged as I talked to the people putting that together, that they said to me that even though Jefferson City was the host next year, they were already looking to rent our civic center because it's such a great venue. So, that's a really good deal for our town, and so, that group was there, and then we had the big roller derby, which I, again, did not go or volunteer for that, but we're getting more, and so, please pass on to Bruce. He seems to be doing a really good job.
Work session.
I was told by the dancers that Jefferson City is also coming by Lebanon. I'm sure it wasn't the same ones that you talked about, but they are coming to Jefferson City.
That's what they said, yeah.
Sometimes they have conflicting deals.
November 6.
Six?
Their first Thursday.
Work session. Thursday.
November 6.
Did you have something you wanted to add?
No, that's all I was asking about. I wanted to make sure. Sometimes you have something conflicting with those things, and we've changed it, so I just want to make sure I don't have it or not.
There will be a work session next Thursday, or week Thursday, at which the mayor will not be, because he's going to be in Florida with grandchildren.